...presentation, just walk us through it for the public and ourselves. I don't know if you had specific questions.
No, I want to hear the presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Brinkman. This evening before you, and I also included the large spreadsheets on the dais.
Thank you.
Sorry, it didn't get into your packet. So this is the fifth time, I believe, we've brought a ROPS, a Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, to you, having to do with redevelopment dissolution. It's required by AB 1484, and it's reviewed by the Oversight Board and the Department of Finance. So in your staff report, it just talks basically about the process, which you're pretty familiar with. This report is due to be submitted to the Department of Finance by October 1st. It is scheduled next week for the Oversight Board. I believe we've confirmed that Thursday will be the meeting, and an agenda will go out tomorrow. The Department of Finance has five business days to review everybody's ROPS and request, or they can request review within five days, and then they have about 45 days in order to submit comments. So that would bring us to November 15th. And we have historically received comments and might expect that again on this ROPS. Then the city would likely request a meet and confer and go meet with them face-to-face to discuss their comments, and then we would expect a final determination letter in December, mid-December, so that we would receive the funding that we get every six months in January. That's kind of the schedule. So attached is a resolution, and the attachment to the resolution is the form. The first page is something familiar, and it just summarizes what we're asking for for the next six-month period. The period that we are requesting the funding for is January 1st, 2014, to June 30th, 2014, that six-month period. And we put in our request for items that we say are required obligations, and the Department of Finance and the County Auditor Controller determine how much property tax increment can be allocated to these obligations. So here, we are requesting 21.2 million of our bond funds to be spent. We are this time allowed to request the spending of bond proceeds because we've received our notice of completion. That was forwarded to you. We received it dated August 29th, and that allows us to request the spending of this. This is for the item that was on your previous ROPS for the ECL agreement. Then the next line is $3.7 million for reserved balances. Their definition of reserved balances is there are maybe three categories. One is money that was left over that we were allowed to keep from the two due diligence reviews. So there was a housing due diligence review and a non-housing due diligence review. In those reports, they said you can keep this certain amount of money and draw on obligations. So those are concerted reserve balances. Also, there's a practice that you're allowed to request an advance for debt service bond payments, and that's considered reserve if they fund that. And so that falls into that category. On this first page, row D is called other funding, and those are drawing on beginning fund balances, money that we still had in the bank. Even though through dissolution, that money has slowly been tapped into, we still do have funds that are defined as other funds, and so we are requesting to draw on that by 3.2 million. So the big request is for the $14 million, and that's requesting new money. They call it RPTTF, Redevelopment Property Tax Trust Fund money. And so the details following on the next several pages list out all of the funds that we're requesting and which specific obligations those are paying. There's also a allowance for administrative costs of 3% of that number, and so we're requesting the full amount of that. So that's where you come up with the $14.1 million of RPTTF money. Now I'll get into the details of that a little bit. So also on your dais, I put a one-page, which is the second page in your packet, called Report of Fund Balances. That's a new sheet. They've never requested this before, so it was a bit of a challenge to put it together, I might say. How about if I go over that last? So then you have the very colorful sheets starting, and this is the new request. All of the red-lined items are things that either have been denied previously by the Department of Finance, or we've completed that project. So there's a column, column J is a new column, and it says retired, yes or no. So we've distinguished that all the items that are in red are retired, and you can ignore those. The other items have amounts listed in one of those columns that I just defined, and it totals to those amounts that I just totaled. So I won't go through the details of these. They're very similar to items that we've requested in the past. As I mentioned, the ECL agreement is kind of a second new request. It was denied last time because we didn't have our finding of completion. And then on the last page, where it lists items 102 through 107, those are actually new items, and they're really just kind of administrative things that we found that specific vendors were not named previously, arbitrage rebate calculations, the consultant that helps with continuing disclosure. There's a project for the community garden that we want to put irrigation into, so Irish Construction is listed as the payee for that project. We've also added a line, 106, to attempt to recover legal fees on our lawsuit with the state, since they're appealing it.
Let's see if that...
I'll try.
And then there's also a new instruction that says, if you requested something in the past, but it wasn't funded, either because there was an adjustment made, or because there really wasn't enough funding available, you can request it again. And so in our last ROPS period, we were not paid the administrative allowance, so I'm requesting that again. So those are really the only changes to it.
Just ask briefly about that. Why is it that we were not, I mean, the administrative cost was built in, I thought. How is it that we were denied it or not paid?
It's because when you calculate, every six months, you calculate the total tax increment available based on your assessed value, subtract out administrative fees that the county charge, pass-through payments, and then your recognized obligations. And in the last period, it was a very large number, because that's when our debt service payments have the principal and interest payments. It's over $10 million. There wasn't enough to pay the full amount that we had requested.
So we were given the administrative, but we had to use it actually to pay the debt service, and so we're now asking for the additional?
Yes. It was authorized, but not funded. And that is something that's new that they're trying to address, because that has happened to us several times. I have a little chart that I can put up and kind of show you the history of that. But that is something that we were very fortunate that we had a lot of cash in the bank, so it didn't affect us like it has other agencies, and so we've been able to draw on that. And then the next section is also a section that looks a little bit different, but it's the same concept. They're asking you to report, what did they authorize on a previous period? This is ROPS 3 period. What did you have authorized? What was funded? And what did you actually spend? So that's filled out there, and it shows that we spent everything, every single dime that we received and more.
Which page was that, again? The last one you were just mentioning?
The last section, and I'm sorry...
The last section with the gray and green?
Yeah.
Very tiny?
The handout doesn't have page numbers on it, but in your staff report, after all the brightly colored sheets.
So it's the two and a half pages?
Page 33.
And where does it show that we spent it all? You're looking at the numbers at the top?
The very top line, they have totals. And so, let's see, I believe they're labeled. So if you look at column K...
Yes.
That is what was authorized for RPTTF by the Department of Finance, 7.6 million. Then column L is the amount that we received from the county plus some of our beginning balances, about $1.8 million we had to tap into our reserves. And that allowed you to cover all the costs that was in N, which was 3.96, which was actually spent. So we're showing a difference of zero, which is good, because they used to subtract that difference from us on previous ROPS. It was a problem.
So the difference is O, and there's actually no number in that box?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So those are kind of the standard forms, so I'll just go back to the report on fund balances, see if I can completely confuse everybody, and then we'll get into more detailed questions. So...
You're doing great.
Thank you.
Part's making sense.
The report on fund balances, they're trying to find where every last dime is, is what they're trying to do, and I don't blame them. So I gave you a revised sheet. The only thing that is different on the revised is the one that I circled right there, which is column G1. And that's kind of the number I left blank, because I was unsure of it, but I feel more sure now that that is a beginning balance as of January 1st. I mean, we don't really keep our records that way, so I had to do a little backing into it. So to start at the beginning, in columns C and D, well, column C is, how much do you have in bond proceeds? So this is a hard number. We have $24.7 million in bond proceeds. We're requesting to spend 21.2 of that on the ROPS that's before us. Column E, reserve balances, that's the due diligence money I told you about. They allowed us to keep some money. We've been drawing on that over the last three periods. I think by the end of ROPS 1314A, which ends December 31st, we'll have $107,000. We've spent a lot of that money, and that $107,000 is on this ROPS. So that'll be zeroed out.
Can I ask a real quick question? Why is it that this money, the reserve balance, was not swept up in the due diligence?
It was allowed to be kept. There was one sheet in there, one that we argued about a lot, that said that these were obligations from previous ROPS that they were not funding.
Spending.
Yeah. It was kind of a timing thing. They let you keep some money and give, yeah, it was basically just a timing exercise. So basically, we're going to spend down all of that money that they allowed us to keep through the due diligence review. The next column is a column where they're trying to attempt to show how they might advance you money for the future bond payments. The bondholders are very interested in this column, because they want to make sure you always have money to pay them. So the problem with that column is that we've requested it the way they said, but when there's not enough money, you don't really get it. So that sometimes shows up. That's why there ends up being a negative here on one of the columns, but that's what that column is for. Let's jump to column H. This is RPTTF money, and basically, we're showing that whatever we're getting, we're spending down and more. So when I talked to the Department of Finance on the phone, they said, you can't have a negative in these columns. And I said, well, I do have a negative, because you didn't give me all the money I asked for, so I'm going to show a negative. So they're probably going to have a problem with that. They're going to tell me to adjust how much I want to spend, because we're still in the estimate period. You know, they're asking for spending through December, and we haven't spent that far, but I put the numbers in there that I'm authorized to spend. So for column H and I, I kind of have that situation, where you authorized that I could spend, you know, $14 million and the administrative fee, but you didn't give me all of that money, so we're short.
And that's the amount that we, you added to the new ROPS of the 3.94?
Yeah, the column I, that 3.94, I added to the new ROPS. Column H, I didn't, because in general, we do have a practice of trying to overestimate to make sure we don't get shorted money. So I think with the beginning balances and with the fact that we do put in very high estimates, that I think we will be able to absorb that other 597,000. So I left it as a negative, but... So column G is kind of the new one, and this is where any tax increment money that was remaining from this whole process that was still in our books, and also any new money that's coming in. So even though redevelopment is done, we still have a lot of loans and agreements that require payments to the agency, the successor agency is receiving. You can look here on column G in line 2 and see that we received $1.7 million in the last fiscal year. Some of that was interest, some of that was payments on loans, and also a large settlement that we got, that we were successful in. And so that money goes into the pot, that they want you to spend that down before they give you new money. So the 1.7 is new money, and then the number above there in line 1, beginning balances, the 3.8, that's money that we already had sitting in our accounts, in addition to the due diligence money. So anyways, we are also planning on drawing that down in this ROPS period. If you look at the first page of the actual ROPS with all the red on it, you can see column M is titled Other Funds, and we've allocated 3.25 million to that. The amounts that are in that, when you look through the different sheets, is that there's $750,000 that we're planning on forwarding to, I guess, a co...
Settlement payment that's owed to Mr. Robinson in the Site B litigation.
And then also, we have been working on the Greenway at 59th to Midblock on line 78 of that ROPS, and we're allocating $2.5 million as a placeholder for that project. And so that's what we've said to the Department of Finance, that we want to use this remaining fund balance on, and that would pretty much get us close to zero. Of course, these are unaudited numbers, so I put notes in here that said that this is unaudited, and once we complete our audit, then the numbers can be a little more final. So that's my overview of this new page. I had one other slide, just because I think one of the council members just wanted to see a picture of what the ROPS money had been doing.
Just leave it. Just wait. There you go.
Just wait. Just patience. Okay. So this is also small, but is what I'm just trying to do here is show you that their process that they have put together is not perfect for us. We're, you know, a very active redevelopment agency. We still have a lot going on. We have, you know, some good-sized debt service payments. So when you look back at the previous fiscal year ending June 30th, there were two ROPS periods, ROPS 2 and ROPS 3. And so we received $8.7 million, but we spent $11 million. So we were drawing down on our balances, right, of 2.4. Then in the ROPS 3 period, we only received 2.1 million, and we spent almost $4 million. So we were again drawing down. Now, the things we were drawing down on was ROPS 1 money. When we got the first payment, we considered that tax increment, and so there was money there to draw down on. And then I just put in the other column there also to show that we did have some beginning fund balance of 5.5 in there. You know, we've spent some of it down, and we have some left. So this is just trying to show that, you know, as we get, you know, as we've done the ROPS more and more, we can even start to estimate closer to what we believe the available funding is going to be, so that we know that we're going to get what we request. But there is a, every six months, there's a pretty big discrepancy, because the debt service payments are $10 million in September and $4 million in March. So that's when the March payment is drawn down, there's a little bit left over, right? I mean, it's not 10 million, it's 4 million, and then you might be receiving a distribution to taxing entities. That's what you're interested in. When do we get our 22%? Well, if we're spending all the money that's available, there's no distribution to taxing entities, but in the periods where you don't have the big $10 million payments, it's likely that our remediation costs are starting to slow down. You know, they've been ramping up, but then they're going to start to slow down, and there will be some money available to be distributed to the city and to the other agencies. And we're going to work on forecasting that for you next time.
But that's what's been hard to forecast, or it's been pretty volatile.
Yes. So that's the end of my report.
Well, it's a very impressive report, I have to tell you. Does anybody else have any questions?
I have a question, Deborah. I was a little concerned about the remark you made about the potential inability to pay off the bondholders. Could you explain that a little more and also give me an idea what the bondholders are thinking about that? We're in pretty good shape here, thanks to you, but certainly, there are other redevelopment agencies in the state of California that are in total disarray. How is this affecting the creditworthiness of the California bonds?
You know, when I first got here, there were several investors calling me all the time and asking me questions, and we were, you know, we had a lot of cash in the bank at that point, because we hadn't gone through all the audits. So, you know, we've paid out millions of dollars to the state, and we're drawing down on the rest. So it is going to be a concern for us to make sure that we have new money available for debt service, and we will have to manage our spending to make sure that that's the first priority.
Does the state understand the importance of that new money flowing in to pay off that bonded indebtedness?
I believe they do, and it is part of the law, and I believe everybody acknowledges that, but I think there's still administrative errors that aren't making sure that that money is secured. So even on one of our ROPS, the county makes adjustments, and there's really not an opportunity for us to review that with them. When we talk to the Department of Finance about those adjustments, they say, well, you have to talk to the county about that, and I've met with them separately. But I think at one point, they made an error and, you know, subtracted out some reserves on a previous ROPS, and therefore, you know, we only got $2 million instead of the, you know, four that we were asking for. So we have to really watch it closely.
My concern here is, I know you're doing a wonderful job bird-dogging this and watching them, but I have a real concern that we may in the future fail to make some bond payments, which will dramatically affect this city's credit rating. We're so small, we just have to anticipate that and make sure it doesn't happen.
We won't let it happen.
So, all right.
Yes, good. We won't let it happen.
Brooke, you have a comment?
Yeah, just a quick question. I recall every time we did a bond issuance, we bought insurance, bond insurance. My understanding is that the bond insurance did two things. It increased the bond rating, so it made it more attractive for investors to buy the bonds, but also, didn't the insurance protect against what Councilmember Davis was just talking about?
That is a great question, and I actually don't know the answer to that, because I'm not sure if the insurance was insuring the revenue stream, which is now different. So I will look into that, and I'll get back to you.
Thank you for your question.
Ken, you have something you'd like to say?
Yeah, just two comments. If you could provide some of those larger copies to the audience, it might be easier for some folks to follow. And then what is the status of the pedestrian bridge money? I mean, we won a lawsuit. I don't know where it is, but maybe we have to spend it quickly, according to what you're saying, so I just wanted to find out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Should we ask staff to respond about the bridge and where we are with the lawsuit?
Yes, Mr. Vittal.
The state of California has appealed the decision, and we don't have a briefing schedule at this point in time, so right now, it's just, it's been appealed, but there's no real timeframe as to when a, you know, the matter will be briefed to the court, when there'll be a hearing on it, and when there will be a decision. But the monies that we were successful, at least at the trial court level, securing, those have been placed into an escrow account, and those were to fund not only the pedestrian bridge, but also contribution to the transit center project, as well as repaying some brownfield loans, two brownfield loans, back to the city. So it's about $16.5 million that's sitting in an escrow account pursuant to a stipulation that we entered into with the state, which then allowed us to get our finding of completion. So the money's there, and we're just having to, you know, litigate the issue with the state of California.
So is there anything we can do to push the litigation, or is it something we have to wait for?
No, it's really in the hands of the court. The trial court has to provide a certified record to the Court of Appeal, but it's in their timeframe, and, you know, when they do it, that sort of starts the clock ticking in terms of, you know, briefing schedule, but at this point in time, they have not submitted the certified record to the Court of Appeal.
Okay. Anybody else want to make a comment on this item?
I move the resolution.
3.4.
If you could move it as amended, if you could move the exhibit as amended.
Say that again?
The amended...
Move the amended resolution. Deborah, thank you. Outstanding work. Outstanding.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Asher?
No.
And Mayor Brinkman.
Aye. Okay.
If you don't mind, I have one other question that may not be answerable right now, but I'd just like to ask staff to bring this information back, along with other things about the insurance, et cetera. Is it possible to know how much tax increment money would have been received? You talked about, you know, the assessed value in town and the certain percentage, and the county then taking administrative cut off of that, and how sometimes it looked like our enforceable obligations with the uneven payments for our debt service bumped right up against what that tax increment would be or is still, even though it's not, no longer coming to us as redevelopment money? And so my question just is, I guess, what that tax increment amount is compared to what we are asking for on the ROPS? Is it possible to have those numbers juxtaposed? Or was that what you showed us, and you could just give me a copy of that slide?
No, actually, after the county makes their distribution, they provide me with a spreadsheet that shows how, all the deductions. So I don't have a very good way still of projecting forward, but I can show, I can put it together in one spreadsheet of what we've received so far.
That would be great. That's what I was interested in. Thank you.
And then what we are going to do moving forward is actually do a forecast, so, you know, the tax increment, former tax increment would conceivably grow at the same rate as the rest of our property tax revenues, so you can look at how that's going to, you know, projected to grow. And then we're going to know pretty, you know, well how the expenditures are going to stabilize. We know what our debt service is going to be. So we're going to try and do, you know, more of a three to five year.
And I'm just kind of curious what percentage of that tax increment is claimed by our debt service, you know, going forward, so there's a sense of how long it's going to take to pay off that debt and where that leaves us and when. Yep, we can get that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on 3.4?
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the legal expense of 4.1. Any comments?
I have a question.
Yes?
That balance is really getting kind of low. What happens when we reach zero?
But we have $84,000 left.
Yep.
I thought I saw somewhere that we were only projected to spend $50,000 over the next year, and I thought that that balance sheet originally was for just one year, and we didn't expend it all, but maybe I'm wrong. Stein and Lubin.
I mean, from what I see, there's about $85,000 roughly left.
When we were started with $200,000.
Yeah, but we were 12, 24,000.
But I don't think there's really a lot of work left for her to do, other than attend meetings, so I suspect her monthly billings are going to be, you know, more in the lower end of the range that you're seeing on there. So I still think there's plenty of budget for her services. And then if it's, you know, if there's a need to amend the contract, then we can do that at a future date, but I don't see a need to do that for some time.
Okay, thank you. And on our ROPS, on line four of the ROPS, is $50,000 for Stein and Lubin, and I assume, and it's under administrative, I assume that's just for that six-month period of January 1 to June 30. So this is additional funds, or is this from the same remaining budget?
Well, that's, I mean, you're asking for 50, we're just sort of guestimating $50,000 through the, you know, that six-month time period. I think it's high, and I suspect it's with, I don't think we've really taken a look, if I understand your question to be, would that be within the $83,000 or whatever it is that's on this contract, or would we exceed it at that point? I don't know that.
Like, is it additional funds that we're asking for from the DOF, or is this expending funds we already have, I guess, if it makes a difference?
If it's, I'd have to look at the sheet to tell you that. It's new money.
It's new money under RPTTF.
Right.
So the $84,000, I don't know if that's funds that we have, or if that's... or if that's just a budget number.
No, that's just the budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're hoping this $50,000 will help fill that?
The $50,000 would go to pay what is authorized in the budget for this contract.
January 3, June.
Yeah.
Okay, going once. Okay. Item number 5, Information Staff Report from the Chair of the Oversight Committee. We are going to have a meeting next Thursday, is my understanding. I have to be out of town for a couple of days. So it'll be in these chambers at 5:30. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Okay. Closing that meeting.